Good afternoon, welcome to the December 1st, 2020 Lone Tree City Council Study Session. The study session will be conducted as a virtual meeting held electronically in accordance with Council Adopted Policy Number 20-01. Therefore, members of the public will access our meeting only during through electronic participation. The City Council does not vote during our study sessions since our presentations are for information only, and therefore there is no public comment period during our study session. However, join us at 7:00 PM when we have our regular council meeting and then you can provide public comment. To start off this evening, we're excited to have one of our youth commissioners, Sarah Paschke, who's going to give us an update on what they have been up to during these times of COVID. So Sarah, we will turn it over to you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor Malley and fellow City Council members. Thank you so much for having me here today. I'm really excited to share with you the strides that the Lone Tree Youth Commission has been taking in addressing community outreach issues in the midst of the global pandemic. That's really been our overarching goal and our idea that we're looking at, like how can we help businesses and schools when they can't go to businesses and schools? So last meeting, you heard from Rex Bordelay, who discussed his work in developing a business outreach plan. In the meantime, I have been working with local schools to learn what challenges they are facing during this crazy time. I've been in contact with Lone Tree Elementary and the Douglas County School District Night School Eagle Academy. Both schools have a unique problem, but they have a similar objective in this problem. Lone Tree Elementary and Eagle Academy alike are struggling to ensure their students and staff receive free meals a day. Lone Tree Elementary, at the beginning of the semester, were provided with take-home meals on Fridays for students and staff. These simple brown paper bag meals gave the teachers a sense of security that their students would get to eat over the weekend. Now, the district has stopped providing these meals on Fridays. Teachers or parents need to go to the district high schools to pick up the paper bag meals, which isn't only an inconvenience, but sometimes impossible due to the difference in school end times. At Eagle Academy, the students live much different lives than most. Mrs. Clark, their volunteering coordinator, informed me that many students are couch surfing, living out of their car, or struggling with home life situations. She has been trying to stock up on food and provide gallon-sized bags of food and water for their students to take home. But now that the students aren't at school, the students can't grab these bags whenever they need. Also, she used to be able to provide $20 grocery store and gas station gift cards. This would allow students to, the ability to buy food and gas when needed. And now that Mrs. Clark doesn't get to see these students in person, she is concerned that many who rarely ate meals already are going to have an even bigger problem. While both schools are experiencing different problems, they both involve food and the Youth Commission wants to help. We may need to contact the district regarding a paper bag meal delivery service, reach out to local businesses and see if they would be willing and able to provide periodical meals, or host a community gift card fundraiser. We will keep you updated as we move forward with our plans. Along with working with Lone Tree Schools, the Youth Commission has had several amazing opportunities in the past few weeks. Many Youth Commission members shared their concerns with Councilman Carpenter regarding teen mental health. We were excited to see the Douglas County Youth Initiative has already taken progress to address these concerns. The mental health toolkit hopefully will be a successful tool in helping the mental health of local teens. At our last Youth Commission meeting, we were honored to host two guest speakers, Judge Lou Gresh and Jeff Howwell. The Youth Commission voiced their interest in local and state courts at the beginning of the year, and we're super excited to get to speak with Judge Gresh. He met with us and the teen court members before our meeting. Judge Gresh shared his story as a lawyer and judge with us, talking about his time as an attorney, clerk, and now a municipal court judge. He shared great insights on his career path and answered the questions of the members who are interested in a similar path. During our actual Youth Commission meeting, we spoke with Jeff Howwell, the Lone Tree Director of Economic Development and Public Affairs. He advised us on our local business outreach program, helping us finalize our Google form to send out to small businesses. He also informed us that he can send out this form in the community newsletter, which will be immensely helpful, as he told us that there are hundreds of small businesses in Lone Tree, and it'd really be impossible for us to go around to each one, giving them a form, or giving them a QR code to access this business outreach form. We look forward to working with him in the future as our projects progress. Thank you so much for your time here today. Myself and the Youth Commission are excited to continue moving forward with our projects. Does anyone have any questions about what we are working on?
Sarah, that was a very thorough and thoughtful presentation, so thank you first and foremost for that. And I think, speaking on behalf of council, I think the food insecurity issue is something that we definitely want to understand and learn more about. And actually, you shared information with me this afternoon that I was not aware of. And so, thank you for that, and thank you for your research and reaching out to do that. I think that's very, very important. And again, we appreciate the work with the business community. I'm going to ask Councilmember Carpenter if he wants to share any follow-up with the work on the mental health issues that he has been addressing with our Douglas County Youth Initiative. So, Councilmember Carpenter.
Yes, and first and foremost, Sarah, that was a great job. That was awesome. So thanks for that update. And I think that, did you get the email from Leanna? She was going to try to circulate that to you all, as well as teen court. And just wanted to say heartfelt thanks for, I know a lot of you spent a lot of time and put a lot of thought into that, the suggestions, and just letting us know really how you feel. And the, I know that everyone, all the stakeholders that were in that meeting were really kind of blown away and really impressed and jealous about what we have in Lone Tree with the Youth Commission, so thanks for that. And I know we're working on next steps around getting the toolkit out and circulating it, and trying to be creative, whether it be through Snapchat, or TikTok, or other forms of social media where you all spend all your time. So that's where we'll definitely need your help, and we'll solicit your feedback and assistance on that down the road, as the toolkit becomes more defined. But more importantly too, is keep us posted on your community outreach efforts, because we want to help you in any way possible. I like the creativity, and I applaud you on your being proactive and meeting with Eagle Academy, as well as Lone Tree Elementary. And there certainly is a need, and we hear that a lot, is these kids who really rely on meals via school, you know, in this virtual world, it's really difficult. So we want to help in any way possible going forward to that. But great work, and let's just keep it collaborative, you know, keep the conversation going. It's too important, and I know we're coming up to the holidays, which is sometimes a black hole of productivity, but I know the Youth Commission is willing to work with you all as well. So as you kind of finalize things on your end, you could have Leanna or Austin share it with us, and I will, I'll be the intermediary between you all and the Youth Initiative, because they are, they are interested in trying to help out in any way possible. So great work, awesome job.
Thank you, and I hope that we're able to work with the Youth Initiative, that's what it's called, correct?
Perfect, correct.
Yeah, you're used to. Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion, Jay, because I think the school district has this issue not just in the city of Lone Tree, but obviously throughout the district. And as you indicated, maybe there's a black hole of the holidays productivity, but that there's also a great need during that period of time, I would imagine, too, without the usual contact back to school. The only thing, Sarah, I would also just ask if you could potentially try and check in with Eagle Ridge Elementary as well, just the other school located in the city of Lone Tree, to see if they're experiencing similar issues. As you, as you look to address those issues, I guess we want to be as comprehensive as we can be. I'm not going to run through all of the council members, but I'm going to pause briefly. If there is a council member that has a specific question for Sarah, I would invite you to please go ahead and share that question. Okay, Sarah, I'm not seeing any other questions. But again, great, great job, really, really thorough, and we look forward to hearing from you again. Please send our best regards to our Youth Commission. We thank you so much for the extra work you are doing virtually, on top of your schoolwork and everything else you're doing, and wish you a very safe and healthy holiday season. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, bye-bye. All right, next on our agenda is our Winter Cheer marketing campaign update, and Jeff Howwell is going to lead that off for us. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Nice to see you all, and thanks for a few minutes tonight to keep you up to date on our winter marketing campaign, and give you some of the background to it, and how we're going to go about promoting our retail and restaurant businesses for the winter. First of all, as you can see, our brand is attached to the top. Winter Cheer is what we are calling our campaign. Forte Advertising has been a terrific vendor for us, and their speed, as well as creativity in this process. But at its core, Winter Cheer is a regional retail marketing campaign. Our goal is to promote our retail and restaurant and, you know, service business assets to the region that, in many ways, already shops and uses our community. We want to remind them that we're here, but also reach out to even a larger market in the Metro Denver region, and encourage them to, as you can see below, shop, eat, and give in the city of Lone Tree. Those taglines are important, because we'll be using those three different taglines, the play on words, if you will, in a variety of ways. You may have seen over the weekend, in our social media, the use of shop was used frequently to encourage safe shopping at, of course, Park Meadows Retail Resort, but in all of our retailers in the community. This is a CARES Act-supported effort, so another big piece of this is promoting safe activity, whether it's safe shopping through curbside delivery, or special events that I'll get into, you know, or, you know, safe practices while dining out, whether it's curbside delivery or, you know, dining outside. So that's a big piece of this, but we've also included several real disclaimers, too, about how to dine or shop safely in Lone Tree. So each of these pieces that we do dive into that. Next slide, please. But like I said, it's, the biggest piece of this is that it's a regional marketing campaign, so there are a huge piece of it is the media buy. We are going to be found on our website and social media, of course, the city website, and the great work of Denise and team to socialize this campaign is, has been and will be important. Our website is completely up to date with the campaign information. But PR, a series of press releases and videos, you can even visit our website today and see the latest video in this process, and there's a lot of content there already as well. And then, out to the region, you know, we're doing a direct mail campaign to households within about eight different ZIP codes at a certain general wage level that people are, that are typical shoppers of our community are going to. Everyone here will likely receive one in their mailbox. Community newspapers, including Carrot Community Newspaper, as well as the Villager Newspaper, there are about 400,000 impressions will be made through our community newspaper buy. Streaming audio, we're in podcasts, you know, the new, you know, radio, but through streaming devices, well, we expect to receive about 525,000 impressions. And then finally, the biggest piece of this, and there's a lot more to it, but on one slide, I used the word digital advertising. You know, that's where, you know, you're going to be found on Instagram, Facebook, you know, when you pick up your website, or, you know, the mobile marketing, you know, all of that stuff is wrapped up into this, but we expect through that digital advertising 4.2 million impressions. That's how they measure it in the business, but, you know, like I said, the real goal is to get the message that Lone Tree is open for business and a safe place for shopping and dining to the Metro Denver community. Next slide, please. You know, some of the copy you can see is right here. You'll be seeing a lot of this, whether it arrives in your mailbox, or you can pick it up at one of our stores, or you see it in a newspaper, but the copy, you know, follows our graphics with a variety of different messages, too. And we'll make sure you have a full roll-up of this once we get it all out, and you can see it in PDF format as well. Next slide, please. But to go off our three different themes of shop, eat, and dine, now I'll dive into some of the tactics, or, you know, maybe even gimmicks that we're going to be using in this campaign to promote the community. You know, for shop, of course, we want to, you know, people that come to Lone Tree discover the best in holiday shopping. We already know places like Park Meadows already excel at this, but we're promoting that throughout the campaign. One of the tactics we're using is a seasonal savings program, where we're asking our small businesses, or businesses in general, to consider a enticing promotion that they'll call their Winter Cheer Promotion. And we'll post it on our website, we'll socialize it, and if you walk into a location and say, "I'd like the Lone Tree Winter Cheer Special," they can provide that to you as part of their marketing, of course. And we're not even asking for a discount, we're asking for something enticing to do. But pro tip, you know, you can go to places like GQ Barbecue and request a free Carolina or Pearl Pork Sandwich as a part of your Winter Cheer activity. So there's a lot of that, and you can find that on our website as well. Safe shopping promotions, there are a variety that are doing this. You know, one that we're talking to is Dillard's, they're promoting a day that would also benefit the Lone Tree Art Center, but to include some safe shopping hours, as well as local shopping hours at retailers, and helping them promote their own, you know, already generated promotions as part of this. A big appeal to curbside and delivery options that can be found in, at our retailers. The, I'm just tagging on to this, but the shop-local resolution last month, Mayor, as well as just our shop-local work falls into this, and we want to make sure people can think about and consider shopping locally, especially, of course, if they live in Lone Tree. If they live in Metro Denver, we don't mind if they shop Lone Tree either.
We're local to everyone, Jeff.
Right. And then finally, I just want to give a shout out to our partners. Of course, the Park Meadows BID, the Lone Tree BID do their own marketing. Park Meadows, and as a component, the unit of the city is a major advertiser for its facilities. But then, you know, Target, Cabela's, they all do their own private sector marketing at the holidays, and we're the beneficiary of that as well. So there's a lot going on, and hopefully it brings Winter Cheer to the city. Next slide, please. The campaign, you know, the eat portion of the campaign, and we'll also follow our social media pieces of this, you know, the message is get a taste of Lone Tree this season. And, you know, it's also the health, the safety pieces of this is a real promotion of takeout and delivery, and what our restaurants are doing in that category. We're promoting in a big way the Douglas County Small Business and Restaurant Grant Program to help them with, through the fact that they have, you know, significant restrictions. Outdoor dining's been a big conversation since, you know, this fall, and how do different restaurants approach outdoor dining? A big shout out to Rick and Julius, who are fielding tons of calls or variance approvals for tents, igloos, and everything else that's going to help with outdoor dining. And then, of course, the city's initiative with providing restaurants who want them with these outdoor or Winter Cheer igloos. There are now 38 of them out in the community, and we have two left that we're still, you know, finalizing. And so far, they've been a big hit, and you can see them driving around, several in the photos here. And then, next slide, we'll show you where they actually are. We have 14 restaurants that have taken us up on this, and the final two, I think, we'll have finalized within 24 hours. So these are, you know, a variety of restaurants, small businesses, as well as some of the larger ones that have been using these. And from all the feedback I've received, I think people have really enjoyed this. So that's been part of the, not only a part of the effort to help businesses achieve outdoor dining alternatives, but, you know, the, I think the, they're somewhat whimsical, and I think bring some interest in, you know, Winter Cheer to people as well. And then finally, the last slide, and then I'm happy to answer questions. The give piece of this campaign, you know, giving is also, you know, very tied to shopping, of course, to give that perfect gift or share that perfect moment, you know, we want, you know, we want to support our retailers, because they, you know, people go purchase or buy those gifts, but in addition to that, you know, the giving of the community is giving some experiences that, you know, you're all aware of, but I want to reiterate, you know, the Touchless Santa at Park Meadows, the Holiday Tree Family Photo Session at the Art Center, the holiday drive-through experience at the Art Center, beyond the retail piece of this, we're going to use that, you know, tagline of give, and that play on words to promote these events in the community as well, and just get people excited about the winter. So that is the campaign. Of course, there's a lot more to it that I can answer, but I wanted to give you that in a quick summary. So the next slide is simply for council questions, Mayor, and I'm happy to take them.
Thank you, Jeff, and thanks for your great work on this, and you've really been such a champion for the Lone Tree business community, so we want to make sure you get acknowledged for that. I'm going to quickly run through everyone to make sure questions are answered. So Councilmember Anderson, do you have any questions for Jeff?
Jeff, thank you for that update, and for your efforts to help out the businesses in the community. It's a rough time for everybody. Yeah, a couple of questions came up as I was listening to your presentation. One, when you talked about the distribution out to eight ZIP codes, can you just give me a sense of, geographically, how far does that spread? What is eight ZIP codes?
We did, you know, the kind of, in the retail world, they like to say, you know, five-mile radius, or, you know, 10-mile radius from your nodes. So we basically went with, if you want me to list them out, 80111, 80112, there, those are the Greenwood Village Centennial ZIP codes to the north.
Okay.
East of us in Parker, 80134, you know, of course, 80124, our own, to the west of us, the Highland Ranch, 125 and 126. And then, you know, south of us, I think it's 80108, you know, where, you know, the Castle Pines region lies. So essentially, I mean, if you drew a five-mile circle around us, it's kind of that, but ZIP codes don't follow it exactly. We could have gone further, but it would also have been a lot more expensive, too. So we thought we'd stick with those that are really know the region well.
Just knowing that it's about a five-mile circle is very helpful. The other has to do with the igloos. It sounds like they've been very popular. Do we need to think about doing more in terms of providing more igloos?
That's a, that's a great question, Councilmember Anderson. I think, yes, from the desire to do it, we were lucky to have ordered these back in October, when, you know, and the estimate of 40 was about right then, and, you know, by the people that were signing up for them, wanting them, and, you know, the scramble happened as soon as we went to level, the next level of the public health order, and there was a lot of movement. Some decided they didn't want it, some wanted, they did. We had to, you know, do a little bit of negotiating, but everyone that's asked for ones at least has one or two, and that's the good news. But I guess the bad news is now they're completely on back order. I don't know if we could, we could consider new things, and we're happy to keep looking into it, but it took us eight weeks to get the first order. I think we're going to, outdoor heaters, these things, they're very much in short supply at the moment, so I'm just thankful we got these in, but we'll keep looking, Councilmember Anderson.
Thanks for doing what you did. If there was some way to meet a demand that's greater than what we've got, certainly be supportive.
Absolutely, thank you as well.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, Councilmember Carpenter, any questions for Jeff?
Yeah, Jeff, great work. I really like the creativity. I, too, have a question on the igloos, just how, so is it reservation only, I would imagine, and do they also have time limits on it? Because I see with, obviously with limited capacity, they want to turn tables as much as possible, so how are they doing that? And you don't have to get too much detail, but just how are they kind of managing that piece?
Yeah. Thank you, Councilmember Carpenter. It's a little bit of up to each restaurant on how they want to manage. I do know there have some that have set up their time limits, because they want to specifically turn tables, you know, so they've had a time limit. Others, well, I mean, others that are a little less sit-down-like, you know, might, you know, like Munkin Mongus is a good example, they're a little bit more, and they have other options, too, that they can sit at if it's a nice day, that are a little less formalized. And I think honestly, that now that they've just had a week of experience in doing this, they'll probably become more formal, too. I, you know, some are still, like Seasons 52, for example, I finally just got their two up, you know, so they, a lot of the scramble that's been going on is just that everyone's figuring out how they're going to deal with it for the last week. So it's, it's a work in progress, and sorry, I don't have a complete better answer for you, Jay.
No, 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 that helps, it definitely does. I had lunch at Sierra yesterday, out on the patio, and they did a great job, you know, it felt safe, and, you know, the weather cooperated, but I just wonder, when it gets into this colder weather, how some of the other ones are going to be able to, you know, be productive and make it through. So, cool, great, well, thanks for all your efforts. I really like the marketing effort as well.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Jay. So just so councils aware, there is another program that the state is looking at, which would allow a limited indoor capacity dining, potentially. So more to come on that. I bet Bill's going to touch on it in his update for us, but if he doesn't, we'll have a brief discussion. So we are, and Jeff's right on the forefront of, you know, being in communication with our restaurants and talking to them about how we can support them during this time, and even, I'm sure you're all aware, that the state, at the state legislature right now, they're talking about that up to $2,000 a month, allowing temporary tax reprieve, state tax reprieve. So I think we are going to be discussing how we can continue to support these businesses. But, but as far as Winter Cheer goes, I'm going to move on now to Councilmember Shaw to see if she has any questions or thoughts on this. When?
Sure. Well, thank you. Jeff, really, this was helpful to understand more about the marketing plan, and I love it, I think it's really exciting, and I think certainly Winter Cheer is something that we could have for many years to come. So I think it's a really good program, and I do hope that the businesses feel loved and supported, and that it helps them make it through. So, very exciting, and certainly the igloos are the talk of next door, so. That's always fun.
It's always fun when it's a good topic on next door, as far as the city goes.
Yes, absolutely. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, Mayor Pro Tem Brunick, Kathy, any comments or thoughts on this?
Yeah, no, just saying, as everybody else, really grateful that we're assisting on behalf of the businesses, but in addition, I think it would be hard to underestimate right now, kind of the impact on just people being stuck inside now through the winter, and so really appreciate the efforts to give them options for these drive-through celebrations and places to take pictures. I think especially families are going to be looking for new and interesting ways to get outside and do some things to celebrate the holidays. So I really appreciate the Art Center's approach and the things that we're doing to try to keep people engaged and giving them activities. So thanks again for your efforts there.
Agreed, Councilmember Brunick, and the, in addition to that, the Art Center, Alyssa and Elaine have been instrumental in this campaign, too, just behind the scenes, and they deserve a lot of credit overall for it as well.
I really appreciate them, thank you. And Jeff, I think the only comment I have, other than gratitude, is perhaps we should include the Schweiger Ranch Drive-Thru Celebration in our giving element, and then, and I know that there are a number of our local businesses that are sponsoring coat drives or things like that, so I don't know if it would be too hard to identify those other giving opportunities. I know Runners Roost, for example, will take donated shoes, and Madewell in the mall will take jeans, donate, you know, gently-used jeans, things like that. So if there's an opportunity there, maybe we can add some breadth to the give, to the giving side, but I think you've done a really comprehensive, thoughtful plan, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to a discussion concerning public work fees and right-of-way permits, and Justin Schmitz is going to lead us.
Yeah, good evening, Mayor, and members of City Council. Thank you for taking the time today to do a little bit of discussion, really in regards to what we are seeing in the city for some of our street patching and repair work from all the utilities, and we're going to give a little bit of a briefing on what the city currently does for this program, and then also what we plan to do, and some questions we'd like feedback on about some potential options to move forward with in the future. I'm going to follow Winter Cheer, so this is not going to be nearly as exciting as that, but I'll do my best to make it something. All right, next slide. So, quick background, if everybody remembers, in February of 2019, the city did adopt our really first official construction and excavation standards. There was a lot of great work done by Lisa and the Public Works Team to really kind of define a lot of these criteria that were in place in lots of areas, but put them all into one document that all contractors could be aware of our rules and regulations and follow them moving forward. And we have seen a lot of improvements in that in a lot of areas. And we have seen a lot of improvements in that in a lot of areas. We'll talk a little bit about that. But really, this document established the minimum design and technical criteria for all work in the public right-of-way within the city of Lone Tree. Next slide. This also, you know, refers back, so we have the document that really dictates how we apply the rules, and then there's a separate document, which are all of our permit fees. And all of our fee structure for all the public works, right-of-way permit fees are adopted by council and amended from time to time. Again, tonight, we're not asking for anything, we're just starting a thought of some maybe future changes that we could consider for these fees. And these fees vary and apply to roadway closures and any type of work being performed. Again, the intention of this fee structure is to really allow all these utilities and people using our right-of-way to pay their way, and to make sure that we can continue to maintain the infrastructure in the city of Lone Tree at the highest levels. Next slide. So some concerns, really what we've seen from this, again, there's been a lot of benefits we've seen. We've seen a lot of the contractors going and having a lot more ability to clean up markings on the streets, or getting back and repairing our roads since we've adopted our excavation and construction standards. But we still, depending on the people, sometimes we'll see a bit of a challenge to require the contractor to repair all the damage impacts and markings, and we've seen a few of those, again, much less than we saw before, but we continue to see them, as well as sort of our quality and timing for that repair work, especially in arterial roads with high visibility and traffic volumes. You know, many people have driven Lincoln. Obviously, we are very excited about potentially being able to move forward with the paving project next year, but a lot of the work, utility work ahead of that caused a lot of patches and a lot of concerns from certain sections along that section. And that was some that the city's been looking at, and sort of, are there some options that we could continue to look at as we move forward that may allow us some more flexibility to work with these utility companies and contractors? Next slide. So again, these next few slides are just a quick summary, really, of what does the city of Lone Tree currently do when we have somebody come in and want to cut our road? So I'll kind of walk through this as an example. Let's say Excel Energy wants to come in and put a new line in. We do require a two-year moratorium for all roads from the date of the most recent mill and overlay completion. So if Excel were to come in and say, we want to do work today on Yosemite, we would basically not allow that. We would do everything in our power to work with them, unless it's an emergency, of course, but work around that. Or if they did any work, they'd have to fully road mill and overlay the entire street. That's what a moratorium is, right? We want to make sure that first two years of a road stay at the highest level that we've invested money into. Obviously, eventually, we have to let utilities back in there, but that is currently what we apply to all things. And we also were required assurance to be posted by any contractor before that work can proceed, that way that we could use that in the event that we needed to repair the roadway, or if the damage was not repaired to what we needed, we could go and access that surety and do that. We continue to upgrade our surety requirements as a city and really ensure that every project coming in has a surety. The public work staff has been really upgrading that part of our backend work to make sure we have sureties from all of these contractors when they come in. Next slide. A few other, these are super detailed, and I'll go through quickly, but really, the other, so another thing we do require is if somebody's going to come in, again, Excel Energy comes in, we have a really long cut along a road that has been overlaid within eight years. So that is a little longer timeframe, the eight-year timeframe. We will require them to do a three-inch minimum mill and overlay, and we will require them to go all the way to a lane line or across, you know, make a full section. They can't just patch a little piece of it. They actually have to go and do a more significant patch. You saw that with some of the emergency gas leak we had this year on Park Meadows, kind of right by the Kaiser facility. What we did was they did a temp patch, then we had to go back and actually road mill and overlay the entire section there to patch back the whole lane width to that lane line. And so variable on all the projects that come in, but when we see a road that has that type of condition, if it's been within eight years, we typically will require them to do that. And finally, there is a condition that exists that in lieu of performing this work, let's say Excel or another contractor did not want to do all that extra paving work, there is an option that the city could take on the cost of that overlay, plus a 10% increase, and then the city could complete that work in the next year's program. I've asked John Cotton, the previous Public Works Director, Steve Fletcher, myself, we are not aware of any contractors that are taking this option. They've always done the work themselves and not taken this option, but it is an option that is within what is currently written in the city of Lone Tree criteria. So any questions on sort of that, before I move into maybe the next fee, some options for consideration?
Thanks for pausing. Okay, I'm going to quickly run through, I'll go the opposite direction this time. Kat, Mayor Protem Brunick, anything?
No questions here.
Okay, Councilmember Shaw?
Nothing here, thanks.
Councilmember Carpenter? Jay, I can't hear you if you're talking. Oh, you're muted.
I know. Yeah, yeah, no questions at all, but thanks, Justin.
Okay, okay, Councilmember Anderson?
No questions yet.
Okay, thanks. And I don't know if this is a question or just something I'm thinking about, maybe for the future, for the next phase of this, is that if it would make sense to have these conditions be different for different road types? For example, our arterial roads versus more of our local roads, should we have different rules depending on how the road is being used? And maybe the eight years makes sense for a certain type of road, but doesn't make sense for another type of road? Those type of things, I guess is what I'm, kind of, as you've been speaking, I'm thinking about. And so, anyway, I don't, I don't know that there's an answer to that right now, Justin, but just keep that in your mind.
Yeah, and I think that's, that is a great question, one that I think we'll try to highlight here in the next few slides, and then we can kind of revisit it. Certainly, I do think currently, a lot of our fee structure, a lot of the things apply to all streets in Lone Tree, there's not a separation between what really would be an arterial and residential. And I do think that is something that is worth pursuing and looking at, because there is not, especially the fee side, a big difference between those two facility types. So with that in mind, you know, I'll move on to the next few, and then again, stop me if you want, and then I'll pause again when I get through the next few slides. So, next slide. Oh, yeah, oops, I was one early. My bad. So one other thing I want to highlight was, we do have a warranty. So, you know, the city, within the city criteria, we do have a warranty on anything that is cut in our streets or patches that are done, we do have a two-year warranty for when that work was done. And within that period, if something fails, you know, the perma tee, whoever that was, shall be required to do any repairs in the defects in that final asphalt or concrete patch. Again, we've had to apply this numerous times, where someone doesn't do a very good patch on a local street or somewhere else, and we've had to go back, work with Excel or others to repair that. So this is something the city applies quite often, and, you know, this is a good thing that exists, is that we can go back and force that. Obviously, as a road gets older, you know, you'll start to see that wear more often than on newer roads, but I did want to highlight that the city does have this option. Next slide. So one other thing the city does is, you look at this, it kind of looks like a double yellow stripe that exists on a street, that's not what this is, but what this does just is, the city works with all of our utility companies and contractors to try to avoid putting potholes or anything they can within what we call our wheel path. So these are the sections that the wheels would drive on an arterial road typically, within your lane line. So one thing we work with all the contractors is to try to put this anywhere else we can, except right in those wheel paths, as well as if you're going to put any additional manholes, anything else, we don't want those, obviously, in that area. So, again, I'll just try to highlight, the city has been doing, I think, a good job of trying to work with these contractors. Obviously, there's always exceptions that come up that don't always apply in a perfect scenario. But again, this is another, I think, good diagram that's been used a lot with our contractors, and it's allowed them to really push to other locations besides right in the wheel path, which causes us the biggest problems. Okay, next slide. So you probably all remember seeing this graphic. This is from the transportation master plan that we approved last year as the city of Lone Tree. And what this really shows is the level of streets in the city, and really, today, we're focusing on, we have a significant number of local residential streets. We then have our collectors, like Lone Tree Parkway, Timberline, and then we have our arterials. And we really have the two levels of arterials, our minor arterials, which are the ones showing green, Havana, Park Meadows Drive, and then we have our major arterials. Those are the highest volumes, typically above 15,000 volumes in more lanes. That is Lincoln, Ridge Gate Parkway, County Line, and Yosemite Street now, as we added that into as an arterial street in our update of the master plan. So when we're looking at maybe some future fees and considerations, right now, again, typically the fees for a local street would be the same that we'd be applying to the heavier volume streets currently on Lincoln, Ridge Gate, or Yosemite. And obviously, the impacts of any cuts on a Lincoln, for example, or Yosemite, is going to be a lot more to residents, the public, our business community than impacts you would see at a local residential street. So with that in mind, next slide. Really what I have, at least for just consideration, and these next three options I'm going to talk about are simply options that the public work staff could really develop and look into more. Any of these options could work independently or together as a package. These are all just sort of ideas I was hoping to get some feedback on tonight, and then we can take it from there and kind of look at a lot further. Currently, the city of Lone Tree has this one item, you can see with the arrow I tried to highlight here, we have what we call our traffic control only. So this is where the city of Lone Tree can charge a contractor for occupying a space within the road. Now, this only applies if they're not doing any work. So for example, a truck is monitoring something and parked out in the street needs to be out there. If they're doing any work, it's charged in another area, and I'll talk about that here shortly. There is an option that other cities use, and what they really, what it's called is a lane rental fee, and what those are typically applied to is your higher volume streets, your arterial roadways. CDOT uses this, City of Denver uses this, and the typical concept of a lane rental fee is, there's a certain value to the city to allow people to come into a lane, especially during rush hours, peak hours, and there should be some potential additional fees if they want to go on the biggest streets to do the work. Next slide. So really, when we look at this option or consideration, what we could consider a lane rental fee, there's really four things that I think are highlightable and kind of make this a valuable consideration. One is, these lane rental fees encourage contractors to reduce the duration and the scope of the work within the travel lanes on arterial roads. You can think, it costs a little more, right, to have to be out in these lanes, they're going to find every way they can to speed up. It also encourages contractors and utilities to find alternate ways to complete work without impacting arterial roadways. Again, if there's a, if there's a little more fee to use travel lanes, they are typically very creative sometimes about finding other ways to do work that can reduce the time they have to be in our roadways. Finally, it does encourage patches, repair work, that kind of work to be done quickly and on time, so that they can avoid costs, right, of having to come back, do that work again, and pay those rental fees again. So the rental fees have multiple kind of benefits that the city could see. These fees could also be applied, obviously, to help fund future required roadway repairs by the city. I'll give an example on the next slide of what this could look like, and then I'll maybe stop here for questions on this. So this is a very complicated spreadsheet, so, but this is, this is from the city and county of Denver. This is what myself and some other people worked on when we were, when I was there. And really, the things I want to highlight, what you can see here, this is how it's charged, a lane rental fee in the city of Denver. Really, a parking lane or one travel lane is a lower cost, right? And then, as you do any, for example, if you're on Lincoln, you want to close two lanes, it's going to cost a lot more than closing one. If you wanted to close three lanes, it's going to cost even more, because that impact is getting much bigger for the community. It is charged typically on the length of the closure. So if you have a 500-foot closure, plus your taper length, as you can see here on this example, you would charge, based on how much was closed, potential lane rental fees. And now, this would be a daily fee. Again, this is purely an example, we'd have to do a lot more look into it, but this is something that is applied in other areas in the region. And again, if you think about a contractor having to look at working on arterial roadways, there's some incentive to speed up as much as they can, to try to make sure that they are getting, you know, only the days they actually absolutely have to be in the road are they going to be in that road. So I could pause for questions here, I could continue through, there's two more options that I was going to talk about.
Why don't you run through the options, Justin, and then we'll...
Perfect. So, and this is really, would be a whole new kind of fee that the city of Lone Tree does not currently have in place, so that's, this is option one, again, a lane rental fee. So moving into the next two options, next slide. So a second option that I think that we can look into, these are the exact fees from the city of Lone Tree. Again, I took it out of our fee structure. You can see, we could increase our fees for our road and street cuts for arterial roads, as well as increase our fees for paving and milling that's required on arterial roads. So an example of that, you can see, we currently require street cuts at $5 a square foot with a minimum of $75, and our paving and milling are 15 cents a square yard, 7 cents a square yard. There is an opportunity, you could separate and potentially have a fee structure that would look different for arterial roads, and street cuts or paving and milling on arterials could potentially be a different structure than what we currently see on the local road. So again, these are applied on any street in the city of Lone Tree today, so that is an option that we could consider, was creating a bit of a two-tiered fee structure for those particular items. Next slide. So a third option, and this, this is how the city of Lone Tree charges fees for utility installations in the city. So what, another option is, we could consider updating our fees for utilities per linear foot for arterials versus local roads. Again, create the tiered structure, and also updating our fees for certain items that are causing our big issues, like, I'm just putting one out there, gas and electric, I'm not, you know. If you look at, each one of these is charged separately, our sanitary sewer, our gas, electric, phone. So one thing the city could look at is, based on our historical documents and what we are seeing, if we are seeing one certain utility cause a lot more future cost to the city, you know, maybe adjusting that particular fee structure to match up would be appropriate. So that is another option that we could consider. Most of what we're seeing today in the last few years is the gas and electric, because Excel subs out most of that work to lots of other groups, and we have seen some challenges with that. We worked through it, but we do see more challenges with that than some of the ones that perform their own work. So next slide. And this is really my last slide. So, next steps, the first one, I can pause now, so I, you know, I know I have a lot of information, I sort of threw out there, I was just kind of throwing everything out there that we, the team's been really thinking about, and would love to get some feedback, and then we can start kind of pursuing some of these options potentially based on that direction.
Thanks, Justin. So I think this is a great time to pause, and I think for council's benefit, this is something that I've been talking about a little bit with Justin, and really, my, my goal, my, in bringing this discussion forward to everyone, really is to make sure that we are actually covering the costs of the city when we are seeing these cuts. We saw a significant deterioration in Lincoln Avenue after roadwork was done there, and it has just, in my opinion, gotten a lot worse. And the other, the other thing I think would be effective to incentivize these businesses to get out of our roadway as quickly as possible, and really minimize the disruption to the traveling public in the city of Lone Tree. So kind of with that goal, those being the goals in my, in my mind, I'd love to hear what you guys think about those goals, and then think, what you think about the potential options that Justin and his team have brought forward for discussion. So in mixing it up, just to keep you all fresh, I'm going to start with Win this time. So Councilmember Shaw?
Thank you. Yes, this was kind of interesting. I agree with the concept, and I do think it will incentivize some of these companies to think about alternative ways to address their needs, other than carving into our streets, or, or if they still need to do that, to get them out of the way quickly. I, one of the things that I noticed on a list was with landscapers, and, you know, that's kind of a, a mixed bag for me, because they're, they're in the road, but if, if we didn't have lovely landscaping in the middle of the roads and the medians, they wouldn't be there. So I, I, and we want to encourage that. So that's, that, if there are actual costs associated... So that, if there are actual costs associated, you know, I'm certainly agreeable to that, but that would be the only one that I would like to think about some more.
And perhaps that would, in my mind, only apply to that lane rental option, and perhaps as long as that, the landscape maintenance work wasn't done during kind of prime time, whatever we determine prime time to be, we wouldn't be charging the fee. I mean, I think those are the options that, but great feedback, and that's the kind of feedback I think that we need to kind of throw everything at the wall there and see where we come up. So I'll move to Jay, Councilmember Carpenter, are there any things you want staff to think about along this?
Yes, well, I agree, obviously, the fee structure is going to encourage them to be a little more efficient and get in and out quickly. Are we concerned, though, that they rush through the work too much whereby quality is compromised at all?
Yeah, that is a good question. You know, like I said, with other cities, like City of Denver, we have not, you know, I never saw that necessarily, right? Typically, what you see more is, they just, they're moving crews around, and they sort of, if they have more time, they may just take advantage of it. But the work itself, because it's inspected and it's done, typically, we haven't seen any kind of quality issue, but I think that's a great thing that we would need to add as we reach out to some other jurisdictions and kind of learn from what they've learned. I think that's a great question to kind of see what they're seeing on that end.
Right. And then, one other piece, too, in terms of Brightview and Park Meadows Metro District overview, assuming that they don't close off streets during peak hours, there shouldn't be an issue, and I know they try to work with you and Public Works in general in terms of trying not to, you know, be there during peak hours, but do you foresee any issues with them in particular?
So, you know, off the top of my head at the moment, but I do, we just, when we did the construction excavation standards, there was some exceptions put in there for our, what we call our annual permit ease, and those are really the metro districts that do a lot of our maintenance work in partnership with us. And so I think we could, you know, whatever structure we went with, we could certainly find a way to make sure it was consistent with that same goal, that if they're working with us, you know, we could work with them on that. And that is something that came up when we did our construction excavation standards, that was a question we got, and we did kind of work to make sure that was clear, that our annual groups we work with all the time are different than every other utility a person coming in.
Okay, perfect. Thanks, that's all for me.
So, Justin, and just to follow up to one of Jay's questions, I think what we'd be interested in, any additional oversight by the city staff that would be required because of instituting a program like this. But I also, for the benefit of council, and I don't know that, we're certainly not going to do all three of these things, so given the fact that, do you like the lane rental fee concept, or do you like the idea of having different fee structure for an arterial road versus a residential kind of local road? So, and if you don't like the idea of the rental, lane rental, please share that as well. So I'm going to, I'll go to the other two council members, but as you guys, Jay and Wynne, if you want to think about that and weigh in on that issue as well, or you want to get more information on all of it before you make a decision. I mean, that's kind of where we are at right now, is, you know, let's get all the information you think would help you make the decision you want to make. So let's move on to Councilmember Anderson.
Mike, you're muted. Yep, yep. Thanks for complicating the issue, and now we have to talk about quality, duration, and also what our preferences are on options.
You're an engineer, you can do it.
Yeah, I would certainly reinforce, you know, as I step back and look at this, and from our residents' perspective, and from what we're trying to protect as a city, duration is a very key consideration here. It's the inconvenience that it puts on people in terms of having to change their traffic patterns. And so I think any sort of a system that promotes getting the work done as quickly as possible so we can return to normal conditions. Quality is right up there, though, with it. You know, I think our expectation is that if somebody comes in and cuts our roads, puts the road back in similar quality to what it was, or better. And as I looked at the options, I'm not sure the options give me a clear sense for which one is going to do more of those things, but I would look to staff to come back with a recommendation on the approach they think best in terms of primarily minimizing duration, making sure we have good quality. And as a third point, just thinking about this, I recognize this is a Public Works issue, but maybe it ought to be broader. It seems to me that there may be situations where duration is so important that we may even want to work traffic flow patterns as well, and get people away from the work area altogether. So there may be some broader considerations that I just asked Justin to think about, to minimize the amount of time it takes to get some of this work done and get the road back in serviceable condition.
Thanks, Mike. Okay, Mayor Protem Brannick, Kathy, what are you thinking?
Yeah, so I guess I'm having trouble reconciling the intent, which you described at the front, with whether or not I believe that these things would change anything enough to make it substantial, because as you said, you know, there's work to be done. Anytime we institute these kind of things, there's oversight and whatnot that goes with it. And in today's environment, which I'm being very specific about, which is different than maybe what's happening five years from now, there's such an amount of pressure on contractors currently, due to just the lack of availability of workers, that I don't get the impression that anyone's kind of lollygagging around their projects, that most of our folks that we're working with on almost every level are constrained anyway, and are moving through their projects as quickly as possible. So I'm not sure that we meet the objectives, you know, from a speed perspective with this, although I could be wrong, I don't manage these things for a living. So I defer, again, to staff to know more or less about whether or not the incentive is strong enough to really drive behavior change dramatically enough to make it worth it. So that's where I would press on, you know, the objectives are good, I'm not sure that there's enough to be gained for putting in additional work for city staff, so that'll be my only concern.
Yeah, and to that point, I, and I wish I could remember what contractor it was for, but they were, they had cones on our roadways, they didn't always have them in the roads, but I remember making phone calls to say, it's a holiday weekend on a Friday, why is this here? And Justin, you may have been fortunate enough not to been the Public Works Director when I made those phone calls, but I can't remember if it was you or not, I certainly knew it wasn't, but I have had a different experience. I have seen the roadwork, it seemed to me, go on and on and on, and the cones just sitting there, and a truck sitting there with cones, with nothing happening for a significant period of time. And maybe it's because I'm a little more local in my traveling, you know, back and forth on city roads every day. So, but I think Kathy, Mayor Protem raises a great point, is that, is it going to, are we going to achieve the objectives that we want to achieve? Because if we're not, and we're just creating additional bureaucracy, that's in no one's best interest. But the other thing I really do feel strongly about is the cost. When we cut into Lincoln Avenue, that costs us a lot more money than when we cut into, well, since the city doesn't do any work on my streets, I'm going to pick one of our, you know, one of our other residential roadways, right? I don't want to name one in particular, but I do think that there is, there should be a different cost there in my mind, because the cost to the city is different on those roadways, and how often we have to go back in and repair them. And once you cut a road, I don't care how well they go back and repair it, it's not going to be as good as it was before, so.
So, Jackie, I would just add on that, that I totally agree with that. Any place in which we're doing a cost coverage, because the cost is actually different, and expanding the cost to support that, I totally support.
And reducing them to that point as well, in the areas where, right, where we don't. The other thing I'm curious about, Justin, is if we looked at limiting timing of when the work can be done, so no fees charged if you're doing it during a certain period of time, similar to what, you know, the landscaping or our annual partners, is there a period of time for which we wouldn't charge a rental fee, but if the job extends beyond a day, that's when these fees would apply? You know, I'd be curious to look at something like that. If it's a one-day job, I think it's probably more trouble to charge a fee and figure all that out. But if it's more than that, or maybe it's a three-day, that's when we start looking at these. What I'm trying to avoid is those cones in the roads for, the roadways, and they just come and work for two hours a day, because I've seen it. And then they move all the cones, and then they come back and work for another two hours. So I'd be willing to look at, I'd be curious about exploring those types of things as So as far as charging different fees for the different work that's done, I don't know how I feel about that, as far, you know, because do we charge more for utilities? To me, we're really trying to recover our costs and make the work happen efficiently. So kind of back to Kathy's point, I don't, I don't think it's fair, you're cutting our road, it's going to cost us a certain amount of money, that's what you should be paying. And I very much want to designate these fees to go in, to, first of all, you know, pay for staff time, but then anything, go back to a capital fund that is dedicated to our overlay work, right? I want the money going where we say it's going, why we're charging it.
Jackie?
Yeah, Mike?
You know, stepping back from the issue, I see this more as a contracting issue than as a fee recovery issue. It seems to me that we depend on our Public Works Department to work with contractors when they're working in an area, and put the best contract we can together. And quality, timing, inconvenience to our citizens, all those things are part of the contract in terms of picking who does it. Isn't this more of a contracting issue than a fee recovery?
No, because unfortunately, as Justin mentioned, a lot of times, those utilities aren't, we don't pick the contractors, it's not the city that's picking any of these, it's the, you know, it's the electric company, or the gas company, or the mobile services contractor that, company that selects a contractor and is supposed to be managing the project, Mike, but they're not there in the roadway, right? So we have our fees, but that's all, that's the only tool our Public Works Department has. They have to issue a permit, they pay their fees, and then, you know, sometimes, Mike, it makes sense for them to leave our project, go respond to something else, and then come back in and deal with our project, and our Public Works staff has no ability to control that.
Yeah, I understand. I think we have, if there were a way that we could impact the contract by working with these, our routine service providers, Excel, the gas companies, the sewer company, that they understood what our priorities are, I wouldn't be so much worried about fees if we got a contractor that was doing what we'd like him to do, even though we're not hiring him.
Right. And it's not, to me, it's not fees for fees sake, it's, you're cutting our road, it's damaging our road, we're going to have to go back in and repair the road, even if you put it back to the way it was. So we're going to put that money aside when we do have to do another overlay, we have a dedicated funding stream for that. So, but Justin, do you think you have enough feedback from us to take it to the next step to bring back to us to look at it again?
So, yeah, this has been very helpful, and I think what I'm taking, what I've heard, I have all my notes here, but certainly, the big, you know, duration versus quality is a big goal of council to look at, as well as making sure, you know, that we have some very good examples of where that cost benefit, right, would really be applicable, and it would be valuable enough to make that fee make sense. So with those kind of big goals, I think we could do some research, and also looking at, I think there is a lot of flexibility about, you know, again, the example I showed with City of Denver, I don't, we don't need to go there, I don't think at all, but how do we create something that maybe is, to your point, maybe it's a few days, or, you know, how do we balance that duration and quality challenge, but be creative with it? And then we could do some research a little bit more on that, with that, and then bring back maybe a kind of a refined alternative for consideration.
That'd be great, Justin, including waiving a fee, if they can get it done in a period of time and meet the quality standards, so.
Yeah, I think we want to be flexible, but also protect the city, and that's what, you know, I think that's where they do, we do a great job in Lone Tree, trying to balance that, and we want to make sure we get that with this as well.
Great, perfect. I think it's a great summary. All right, you're not going anywhere, though, because now, we're going to have a discussion of our intergovernmental agreement between the City of Lone Tree and Park Meadows Metropolitan District regarding the brick wall engineering study. So, we are so excited and grateful. What are we grateful for this Thanksgiving, is Park Meadows Metro District really, and their generous support of this initiative? So, thanks, Justin.
Yeah, so, again, really excited to bring this discussion item to council today. And really, this will be a discussion of an IGA regarding our brick wall engineering study in partnership with Park Meadows Metro District. And I did want to just also emphasize the amazing partnership that we have with the Metro District and all kinds of projects and programs, and certainly the willingness to partner with us on this, you know, challenging brick wall project is something that the city, especially Public Works, is very excited about. So with that in mind, I'll go to the next slide. Some quick backgrounds, there's way more background than this, but if anybody wants to, I'll talk about it all day with you offline. But really, to start with, you know, the city and Park Meadows Metro District are desire and need to really complete a little more detailed and final sort of engineering analysis to determine a plan for the repairs and/or the ultimate replacement of the existing brick walls throughout the city. Now, these are the walls that, along the majority of the Park Meadows Metro District. One thing I do want to highlight here is, the City of Lone Tree gets the calls, we've gotten several calls this year, with residents concerned about the condition of their brick fence, asking when we're going to replace it. City staff always goes and looks at these, takes a look at them. Ninety-five percent of the wall is not any kind of structural damage, it's just some, we'll be already see some of the bottom layer failing, some of those issues. And that is what we need to study and look at. And so again, we continually are working with residents to communicate that, and this study is what we've let many residents know is coming, and then we're very excited to see it move forward. So this study was originally planned for 2020, but it was deferred due to budget constraints as a result of COVID-19. However, again, we are currently in the process of finalizing this IGA for collaboration between the city and the Park Meadows Metro District to complete this study in 2021. So we all agree we would delay it to 2020, but would like to get it finished up and then move forward in 2021. Park Meadows Metro District has agreed, has approved their IGA at their last November meeting. Next slide. So a few details, and most of this IGA has to do with who does what, right, and how we're going to partner on this, there's some other, the vast majority of the IGA refers to that. So the Park Meadows Metropolitan District will oversee the RFP process, so Taylor is working to get that together, the city staff and Taylor have been meeting to go through it. So this RFP is being reviewed by the city and issued out by Park Meadows, but we've had a lot of input into that process, so it is a collaborative effort. Park Meadows will also oversee the vendor selection and the contract award, they will be managing the study and project, and they will also fund the project cost and have appropriated the full funding into their 2021 budget. The City of Lone Tree role, again, we have a city representative assigned to review the proposals and provide recommendations. You know, again, this being a partnership, we want to make sure the City of Lone Tree has a seat at the table for the selection of who we will pick. And we will also be overseeing the public outreach and communication efforts to address citizen questions. Again, the city already is having to do this, we already have residents coming to us asking questions, so it really made the most sense, you know, I believe, to have the city kind of take the lead on communication about it, as well as expectations for the public. on communication about it, as well as expectations for the public. And that is what the city has committed within that IGA. Next slide. So next steps, and then we can certainly take any questions. You know, the goal would be to have council approval of the IGA at the next council meeting on December 15. That would allow the request for proposals to go out by the end of the year, kind of shooting around December 31. Vendor selection and contract award in January of 2021. Again, I always love seeing 2021 on the calendar there.
Yeah.
And then communications efforts would begin kind of first quarter. So once we get rolling with it, we would then be kind of starting to do the communications process for that as we move forward. Again, this IGA is really necessary to allow us to let this RFP go and to kind of proceed with an agreement between the Metro District and the city on how we're going to work together. Any questions on this study or the brick wall itself?
Thanks, Justin. I'm going to quickly run through, Councilmember Shaw.
No questions. I am very grateful for the work that has gone into getting us to this point. Extremely grateful.
Thanks, Councilmember Anderson.
Glad to see us moving forward. Question, Justin, scope of work and goals for the engineering study. Are we an active participant in that process?
Great question, Councilman. Yes, so Taylor and myself have met several times to go over those goals and objectives to kind of ensure that the city's goals are being included in that. At a high level, you know, a few things we really need to understand is we have a 10-foot easement along the wall, all the way near it. But there is certainly a chance that there's been some encroachments into that easement and we don't have a great idea of what those are. So that's one thing we need to really understand. And we also will be looking at the, again, some of the short, you know, the conditions of this wall, as well as funding options for the future. So, you know, we continue to work through those goals, but the city is, been working directly with them. And we're going to still review the final RFP and approve it before it goes out. Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Mayor Pretend Brenner.
No questions, just pleased that we're moving forward and really grateful for the partnership.
Thanks. And then before I let Councilmember Carpenter speak, I want to just thank Councilmember Carpenter on behalf of the City Council and the residents of Lone Tree. As we all know, Jay is our liaison with the Park Meadows Metropolitan District and has done really a great job working alongside them and with them and advocating for the city. So Jay, we want you to know how much we appreciate the extra effort and, and we also want to congratulate you on the, on, on working to this great partnership with Park Meadows. So with that, Jay, anything you want to add?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, but I certainly wanted to really hand the mic over to, to staff. They're the ones who did all the, the hard work on, on that. So I'll take some of the credit for it, but certainly I want to pass it on to Justin and Seth and Kristen and the whole gang, for sure. But a couple of things from me. So I, I like the fact that we're going to be doing the community outreach piece and I think the communication piece is going to be critical, especially because I know there are going to be a lot of questions. So I just want to make that an emphasis is we've really got to communicate on that, what that communication plan will look like. I do like, would like to thank, again, the partnership of Park Meadows Metro District in, in terms of their willingness to work on this. I know this is a project that's near and dear to them and has been for a while. And this at least gets that process going. So I applaud them for all their initiative on that, too. And the one piece, too, I just wanted to provide feedback for you all. Just in, in their last couple of meetings, they were really impressed with the process of the easements and how smooth that has been from the, the staff and, and from our attorneys as well. So I just wanted to pass that on to you all, just how impressed they are, the, the board is in terms of how fluid that process has been so far, because they viewed that as being a major sticking point. So just wanted to pass that on to you.
Thanks, Jay. And I think Jay points out, well, staff always does the heavy lifting, right? So you guys do great work and, and Justin, your work and certainly our city manager Seth's work and deputy city manager Kristen is all extremely important. So I don't have any questions. I do think as we move forward with this, though, Justin, we are going to, council does want to be engaged in the communication plan and how we're going out and, and interacting with our residents on this because it is such a sensitive issue, we will be in people's yards. So we look forward to more to come on that, but as far as the IGA goes, I, I think it looks great. So thank you for that. And now we will move on to the one item, I can't wait to get off our agenda, but it looks like it's going to be down there for a bit longer. We always like to see Bill, but now Bill's going to give us our COVID update. So Mr. Medina, what's going on?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. We'll start off with taking a look at the metrics if we go to the next slide. So this is where we, where we talked, the same metrics we talked about on the 17th. And of note, the 17th was also the date where the state notified the county that we would be moving to Level Red. So this is a good comparison between those numbers. As you can see, the incidence rate is not looking very good at 934, although it has stopped climbing right now and is plateauing, which is kind of good news. In terms of the positivity rate, we're at 12.3%, which is a bit higher than we were in, on the 17th of November. The state is currently at 11.2%. And then the last one is on hospitalizations. So as you can see, there's a little bit of good news there, but it's not all good news. We have had a decrease in the total number of hospitalizations in this 14-day period, which is the 16th through the 29th compared to the previous 14-day period. However, we've only had, three of the last 14 days have had two admissions or more, or, or less. And the rest of the 11 days have had significantly more than that. ICU capacity is 80% used in the county right now as compared to 79% in the state. We had hospitalizations, total hospitalizations in the county in November were 116. Total in October were 62. And the previous high month was May with 77. So we, we did have a pretty significant month in terms of severity of COVID. Do I have any questions on the, the metrics before we move on?
Council, I'm not going to run through, so just if, if, please just ask your question. All right.
So now we're going to talk a little bit about the, this, what actions the city has taken in terms of operations and services. So we published this to the staff on the 18th following our city council meeting and, and also pushed it out in an email to you all. So we've closed the offices to, to the public and we are discouraging appointments, but we'll take them by exception if, if it is completely required. Municipal court is operating virtually only. And in all other actions, if they can't be done virtually, they're suspended for the time being. In terms of in-office work, we have identified only those critical functions, which we identified as something that has to be done at one of the city facilities and cannot be delayed for 30 days, can, can be done, but we don't want to exceed 25% of staff in any of the given work areas. In-person meetings are prohibited for our staff and we're doing all of our council and CDC meetings virtually. Of course, the, the red, Level Red does restrict the, our center to virtual performances only. And the Link On Demand is continuing to operate with the current restrictions on public transportation. So we'll go on to the next slide here. So a little update on the testing site. So the testing site has tested a total of 2,000 people between the 21st and the 29th. The highest volume day they've had was Black Friday with only 284 tests. And of course, it is able to operate up to 1,000 at this point. And so it's being significantly underutilized. Currently, the site is not appearing on the CDPHU website. And so the county is working with the, with the state in order to make sure that it is, that it is present there. I've seen it advertised quite a bit on the news, but it's certainly not available on the website. The county worked with Mako, who is the contractor running the site, to prioritize first responders, essential workers and their families. And really, this is just going to get an expedited return on the test result. They, they advertise a four-day return and so it'll be something less than that. And I sent an email out to city council and all staff today notifying of them, them of that. And Douglas County is in the process of attempting to get Rapids tests that they can use at that site. So now we're going to talk a little bit about vaccines in development. And this is, I kind of feel like a news reporter here and it's breaking news because it's changing all the time. But the Pfizer vaccine is, is under review by the FDA. Based on what Dr. Douglas told us last week, he is expecting emergency use authorization between the 10th and the 14th of December. This, of course, is the one that requires ultra cold storage at negative 75 degrees Celsius. And it, it, it requires 28 days between doses, between the primer and the booster. So the state does have a plan to, to distribute the ultra cold storage. And that, while it's a complication, it's certainly not going to prevent us getting the, the vaccines out, the state getting the vaccines out. The next one in the order of progress is the Moderna vaccine, also under review by the FDA. It was just reported that the, the, the committee making the recommendation on the emergency use authorization will meet on the 17th. This vaccine only requires cold storage, which is a normal freezer temperature at 20, negative 20 degrees Celsius. And it requires 21 days between doses. And then the last one in terms of progress in the, in the approval process is the AstraZeneca. It is in phase three clinical trials. It's kind of proceeding in the UK a little bit faster here than in the US. There's some advantage, advantages to it in that it only requires refrigeration, no, no freezer cold chain storage. And it's significantly less, about 10% the cost of the other vaccines. And it requires 30 days between doses. Something that's important to note is that each of these vaccines is going to require two weeks after your last dose to get the full protection of the vaccine.
Is, Bill, is the efficacy of AstraZeneca, I thought it wasn't as good as the other two?
Yeah, so there's actually just been some information released that they were initially doing a, with full dosages in the primer and the booster, they were saying that efficacy was going to be somewhere around 70%. At least that's what the initial reports were. And then they've just released that, for some reason, they did a half dose on the primer and then a full dose on the booster, and they found that that raised the efficacy significantly. But those are just, that's just breaking news in the last day. So.
Well, you are our reporter, so.
So we'll talk a little bit about the state's distribution plan. And this, of course, is under a constant change as well. So they published their draft plan on the 16th of October and that is the current draft that is still out there. The plan uses a three-phased approach based on the availability of the vaccine. So in phase one, we'll have limited doses available. Phase two, they're going to have a large number of doses available that will probably meet the demand for the population being, being vaccinated during that phase. And then phase three is sufficient supply and then the demand is going to be dropping off at that point. And we'll talk a little bit, bit in the next slide about the, the different categories of personnel that fall into those different phases. The state did conduct two end-to-end logistics tests of the distribution of the vaccine. And this was with federal, state and local partners. They used commercial distribution methods that will be used when, when the vaccines are rolled out. The results from the one on the 23rd, I didn't get any details, but the state did a press release and said they were all positive. And I have not heard anything about how the, the one yesterday went. So now we'll get into a little bit about who is included in each of the distribution phases. So today, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices met and they made a recommendation to the director of the CDC to move that what we're looking at is one C right there, highest risk individuals, those individuals living in residential care facilities, moving them into the category 1A. So this, I expect, is going to change based on, on, on the emerging information that we get. The other, the other thing that might change this is that there are certain vaccines that may respond better to different populations. And so this, this may change based on what vaccine is deployed in a certain area. But as it stands now, critical workforce is really looking at, one alpha is looking at healthcare workers. One Bravo gets to our first responders.
Military background is coming out. Most of us call it a B. Well, go ahead.
Yeah, one B gets you to the first responders and public health personnel as well. And then we start getting in the phase two, we start getting into congregate housing and, and essential workers. So likely, the city employees, based on the definition of critical business functions, would fall into essential worker category two alpha. And then you get to the higher risk individuals in the current model, who are those with 65 or older and underlying conditions that put them at risk for severe complications from COVID. And then phase three, of course, is the general public, adults 18 to 64. What's not included on, included in this are children and pregnant women. And the reason that is, is because none of the vaccines were tested on those populations. So they're going to have to wait for recommendations from the FDA and the CDC on where those people should be prioritized in the list. So now we're going to move on, unless there's any questions, we'll move on to the five-star program that the mayor mentioned earlier. So when Mesa County was moved to Level Red, they had a variance in place that was called their five-star program. And the state allowed them to continue for a 12-day period with that variance, which expires on Friday. And on Friday, the state is going to evaluate the results of, of this little test period. And what it is, it allows businesses that demonstrate best practices in transmission control to operate at expanded capacity levels or reduced restrictions, either way you want to look at it. Essentially, if we're in a Level Red and you're a restaurant, you could operate, and you were certified under this program, you could operate in Level Orange. Douglas County, working with Tri-County Health and the municipalities, are very interested in, in getting this program up and running in the county. We have put together a planning, with the county lead, put together a planning team to develop a playbook for state approval and potential implementation. What the county would like to do is pre-certify businesses, if possible, pending the state's launch of the program. So they have solicited, the state has solicited for feedback and that is due this Friday. And there is discussion that maybe by the 18th, the state would implement the program. So this is all kind of things that emerged here in the last two days. And we, Seth has got some of the staff involved in, in helping the county move this program forward. So that is the extent of my update and I'll take any questions.
Thanks, Bill. So I'm not having to have you jump in. Any, any questions for Bill? Well, on behalf of council, I appreciate you keeping us updated on all of this. I think we are very interested in the five-star program, want to lend our full support to exploring that and, and keeping everybody safe, but also allowing our businesses to safely operate. So thanks, and we will look forward to the next one, Bill.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Last on our study session is our consent agenda review, everyone. And our consent agenda includes minutes from November 17th at our regular meeting and then claims for November 10th through November 23rd. Are there any questions on consent? Okay, well, we do have an exec session.
None here.
Okay, none. Okay, good. So we do have an exec session this evening and I am going to give everyone, so we'll sign off this meeting and get, give everyone about a 30-second break and I'll see you again for our exec. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt, but we need to make, I think we're going to make, are we making the motion in this session, Jay?
Yes.
No.
Okay.
Well, oh, Jay, is this part of the regular meeting?
No. This is our study session.
It's recorded, so I think you need to call, call the regular meeting to order. We'll take roll and then Linda will make her motion. And then everyone will jump to the next meeting.
Okay, so should we wait for the seven, six seconds to make sure it's six o'clock then? To be officially official? My clock says six now, so we're good. Okay, so I will open our Lone Tree City Council, December 1st. Okay, so I will open our Lone Tree City Council, December 1st, 2020, meeting, and we'll call the roll.
Councilmembers Anderson.
Here.
Carpenter.
Present.
Shaw.
Present.
Mayor Pretend Brunick.
Here.
Mayor Malley.
Here. We have a quorum. We are all present and accounted for. I will ask our city attorney to state the reason why council wishes to convene in executive session.
Mayor and city council, the purpose of the executive session is pursuant to CRS Section 2464024E and pursuant to Article 4, Section 6 of your Home Rule Charter for determining positions relative to issues that are possible, subject to possible negotiation and instructing negotiators regarding Bridgegate East development.
So move.
I will.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous approval. So we are going to go into exec session. We're going to end this meeting and take a two-minute break and then rejoin, guys. Sorry, I have to step away for one second.
Great.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
So you'll log on to the, to the executive session link that, that Jay sent.